So with us today, we got a double part of this. Number one, we have Hannah Solar, Mr. James Cowell. And also with Johnson Controls, we have Ryan and Robert. And excuse me, because I failed to remember the last names. So Ryan.
You've got the first letter in the theater, Ryan Hall.
Okay.
Robert Lawson.
Okay. So this is a group that is a way, possibly, looking at the big picture, that the city can save some money in the long run on possibly experimenting in some solar. I think that's what you have to look at, is the big picture. And I think, I've had an occasion to listen to them. Ken, would you be able to let us hear one time for?
I don't remember it.
When was y'all here two years ago?
A year and a half.
Okay.
Yeah, a year and a half.
So, but anyway, I will steal their thunder. I'll turn it over to James, Eric, Robert, who will still first.
Yeah, so gentlemen, thank y'all for having us. And so, and I'll obviously brief on my part. I'll let these guys get a lot of technical stuff. So yeah, so Mayor Curtis, I've known him for seventy years myself. Just a brief history, and I was the mayor for downtown for nine years. So I was part of TML. Also, I was president of a group called Tennessee Renewal and Energy and Economic Development, which Mayor Curtis right now is one of the board members of. I was the president of that group until 2015, when I stepped back and took a position with Hannah Solar, because we were one of the members. So it's kind of a conflict. So, so you know, we'd say, and the mayor asked us, you know, a couple of years ago to look at some stuff. And we looked at, you know, the solar stuff, looking at back on TV, had some of the programs that got done, and it changed a little bit sensitive. There's, you know, I think there's a good opportunity here, you know. What we want to look at really is not just the solar, but also, I got with Ryan and Robert here to look at holistically at your city and see what grouping some of the different facility usage, you know, your water, the sewer plant, lighting, along with the solar, what grouping all that together, the effects that we're having. You get more bang for your buck doing it that way. It's simpler, it's cleaner, and you get a lot more out of it. So, you know, and we can talk a little bit more in depth about the solar stuff. But I'll let Ryan come up and kind of talk about just the project in general.
Yeah. Thank you. And thanks again for having the time to kind of, we, you know, the mayor asked us, we were scheduled before to come, but because of the complexity of what we're talking about, felt that maybe we try to have just a session to kind of talk a little more openly about projects, thoughts, questions. We were here maybe in May, and got the approval to kind of look around the city a little bit, and just kind of see if there's a process. And as James mentioned, he said there's a possibility to talk about solar. And, you know, and we were kind of talking about, well, maybe there's a bigger overall kind of long-term solution where we can, you know, use this type of, call it a procurement vehicle to fund items that the city might need that might otherwise not have the capital to invest. And so when I say that, typically, there's never really money available by, say, right? No city, school districts, and high A, they don't, they don't really always have enough money. But there's not always enough dollars to go around to go and buy everything that you potentially need. Much less when you start talking about sustainability and energy savings, and going and buying different light bulb when this one here works just fine. And so what we try to do is look at a way to bundle all this type of energy-consuming items, and then find a way to fund the newer technologies to go and get these things that for the long term for the city will pay for itself, make it more efficient, end up costing the city less than what it's currently dealing with its utility budget and sending that money to the utilities. What we try to say is, well, let's, let's send them less and use a percent of that money to put it back into your facilities. And so when we're talking about bundling all these projects, that's kind of our take. So what I have for you is a little bit of a, and we'll get through some of this pretty quickly. I didn't want to make it this long, and some of this is just for show. But, you know, we, we've been talking to Mayor Curtis for a while. He's very curious about what's out there. And part of what we found here is just kind of a high level. We walked some of your facilities, and we talked, obviously Jerry and his team quite a bit, about his concerns and his needs and kind of what's in the ground. Not only are you saving, you could save money by simply changing the LEDs, but the opportunity for what's underground in your water systems with your meters and with your leak detection that we offer. You know, you're paying to treat the water, and you're selling it to the residents. Well, if those meters aren't accurate, the city is losing revenue potential. If you're off ten percent, twenty percent on those meters, yeah, actually, well then, the residents are getting, or the citizens are getting essentially free water. And in business, you don't want to give away anything for free, right? So you want to try to keep those meters as accurate. And when you're making the water and you're treating the water, and it's in between here and going up the mountain, you're losing half of that water. You're having to treat more to offset that. So what we're talking about is an opportunity to really investigate a little bit more and look into what we can do to save the city money and reinvest it for the future. And by the way, what we're talking about is not going to cost. What we're trying to do, and I say try, but we haven't fully developed it like in an investment-grade audit where we get more detail, is maybe where the city's not having to ask for additional capital to do this project. What we're trying to set up for you is a way to where we can do all these things that we're talking about, including solar, and not costing the city anything more than they're currently budgeted for. Okay? So just the objectives here, and I'll go through these pretty quickly. How the city lives, you can reduce your overall operational cost. Citywide infrastructure, capital renewal needs. Pretty important about the water loss compliance that the state has. Reviewing that, making sure that the city stays in compliance. And then looking at using existing utility expenditures by utilizing performance contracting, which is just another way to say, everything that we're talking about, we're going to guarantee that. So all this stuff we'll talk about in a minute, it's going to sound like, you know, snake oil and too good to be true, but all that's in writing. And we've done Johnson Controls, we've done probably, what was it, about $420 million worth of this work in Tennessee. So we've done a lot here in Tennessee. And then we're going to talk about, just introduce advanced energy technologies, do some new technology out there. Talking about performance contracting, I'm not going to go too much into detail, but essentially, think of it like this. You've got a utility budget that's approved every year by the city, right? And typically, TVA raises their rates, your local power company will buy them power from TVA. They're going to sell it to you at a particular rate, the city, you guys pay your bills and all that. Well, and then you approve a utility budget item every year. And whether that's being escalated at the same rate that TVA escalates their rates, or you're keeping it the same, this first kind of current operational cost, that's your utility budget in one year. And so let's just say you're a million bucks, that's your utility line item, that's a million bucks at the city, whether it's the pumps, the treatment plants, the city buildings, all that stuff. It all costs about a million bucks a year to run your gas, power, or gas, electricity, and water. Now, what we're proposing is, and that kind of when we cut it in half there, under our project, we're going to take some of those expenses that you're currently spending, and we're going to, we're going to take that by putting in newer technologies, and then that amount of money will actually pay for the project. So you're still budgeted that single amount, but we're guaranteeing that we will not go over your utility, your budget line item currently approved by y'all to cover this type of project that we're talking about. And then, of course, and that payment, that savings actually will pay for the project. And then after it's all completed, then you just have this lower operational cost. And once we get down the project further and we're developing, we'll have like a finance workshop and talk numbers and kind of talk where all that goes. But right now, we're kind of like thirty thousand feet, just looking around and seeing if there was even a project in the first place. Areas of focus, we were looking at.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
All right. So with that concept, you're going to take the savings by, let's say, putting in new bulbs, installing these new, more energy-efficient technologies. You're going to take those savings to pay for the capital, the improvements needed to make the savings.
Correct.
So we're going to still spend the same amount of money at the end of the year. We're going to budget the same, we're going to spend the same. So really, where's the gain to the city?
So the city's gain is, so whether you make any improvements or not, you're just going to say that million-dollar example, if you put in LEDs, let's be really hypothetical.
You're going to say the future increases.
That's correct. And so as you are, for example, changing these, these are T12s, changing out these light bulbs because they burn out, and the dollars that spend where an LED might last three times as long, those are savings that if you capture that over time, that the city's actually saving in addition to the, just the energy consumption that now the city's not using as much power. So we kind of bundle all that together, and that's where that would pay for the.
I got you.
Yeah.
One quick question. Please, the hurdle system, everyone may be mistaken. Did the Board of Education or Coodo City come on board and show that they didn't have a gain that first year or six months, but they proposed how they, what it would be in the future recently? Was that?
In Coodo?
Is that with your company or somewhere?
We're related right now with the school district, Golden County Schools.
Schools?
Yeah.
Okay. So they are coming on board?
Yeah, we are anticipating we should be starting construction here within the next few weeks with all the school just in the school.
Because I know I looked at everything like Kelly was asking you. It didn't necessarily kick in, but down the future, they estimate what it would be.
Your savings, as soon as you flip that light bulb to an LED, start immediate.
Right, okay.
Now, the payback, based on certain mechanical systems, to lighting, to water systems, solar, sometimes that takes the paybacks a longer, but when you bundle it, you can say, say these LED lights will pay for themselves in five years, and maybe a new mechanical system might be forty years. But when you bundle all that together, we try to get a term that makes sense to where it all pays for itself, because we don't want to extend your term and do a project like this for twenty-five, because it doesn't make sense. So we try to really, when we come back to you and say, here are some items that we think make sense, and then we'll also show you other items. I mean, our job is to show you all the technologies. Sometimes they just, you know, we don't.
You're trying to make sure that follows it.
Yeah, absolutely. But in part of our finance workshop, when we have the numbers laid out, we can absolutely come back and explain, really get into the numbers and the details. This is what a product will cost, this is what the savings are, this is what you can expect from year one, construction savings, all of that, it's all written down very clear. Absolutely. Just next page, we're talking about areas of focus. This is kind of what, based on what the mayor has kind of, we've talked about a little bit, some of the areas of interest, we're looking at installing an advanced meter reading AMR technology. Now, there are really two. AMR is kind of the driving-by, the radio, beat wheel, reading the meters to get you an accurate count versus a manual reader that's going on now. There's another system called AMI, Automated Metering Infrastructure, it's more like the towers. We feel that, based on the lay of the land here, and the mountains, it just, it's going to be quite expensive. And so this is another option that could really improve the technology of the city versus having to put a number of towers up all over the place to generate that information. The AMI system does away with readers in general, all of that comes into a brain, into the hub. But by the time you start with some land and the towers, it just, I don't think it makes financial sense to really do that, when your meter readers can drive, and it will pick up those signals from those meters and transmit that right to the city. Leak detection, and we're going to talk about this in a little bit. When we looked at this initially, and Jerry and his team have done a good job, kind of, as we've been talking, reducing this number. But initially, when we looked at some reports from AWWA, I mean, the water loss was significant. And sometimes that's a moving number, depending on who's evaluating it, you know? You might have some consultants say one thing, and then the truth might be something else. So somewhere in the middle is still pretty excessive. And so we've got a slide that talks about some leak detection technology that we're currently doing. I think I put a snapshot of Lenore City where we're doing a water, you know, leak detection area. The other piece was just, it's simple, it's just a lighting upgrade and all the stuff. I mean, again, just in here, these are all T12s, these are four bulbs per fixture, T12. I mean, that is ridiculous. This is a, I don't, this is a not good. So we would recommend immediately getting rid of this and slipping this to LED. But likewise, on all the city-owned buildings. Anyway, nothing wrong, it's just, you know, sometimes there's stock available, and it's our job just to kind of explain the value and maybe, you know, looking at some other options. And then, of course, James, we're doing solar. We've identified some sites where you've got some heavy consumption around the city, at the treatment plants, where those pumps and those motors are running a lot, sucking a lot of energy out of the city. That river pump is pretty big, so there's an opportunity where solar really makes sense, and we'll talk more about that. Robert, I'll let you talk a little bit, let the engineer, the smart guy, get up here and talk a little bit. So Robert's our development engineer, and he's going to talk a little bit about AMR and cover some of the scope here a little bit. And we'll just, we'll get y'all. You think you know something? You know that?
The one thing that we've discovered in, in talking with Jerry, the real helpful, and sharing with some of his challenges, the town here with the water system has a lot of challenges with the terrain. You've got like twelve, fifteen hundred feet of difference between the lowest and the highest elevations of water. It's got some extremely high water pressures it has to maintain, which, when you have a small leak, you've got two hundred pounds of pressure or a hundred and fifty pounds of pressure. Most cities are eight, well, operated, eighty pounds of pressure. But because of the terrain and the system layout and the five hundred miles, five hundred miles of distribution. You know, there's other cities that have like four thousand meters, which is about what you have, four thousand two hundred, forty-eight, forty-eight, forty-eight. Okay. They have the same size, but they may only have a hundred miles of distribution. So that increases the potential for leaks. So he's got a lot of challenges to keep the system tight and to keep the water loss down. Also, meters are constantly having to change meters, and Jerry's done a great job keeping up with those. We think that there's some other things that we can do to help with in that area. The AMR, as Ryan's already described, where they drive by a vehicle to pick up the meter readings, that can save hours of time, and those people can focus then on water leaks. As Ryan mentioned, once we get to the audit, we will go through, and we will actually count every light bulb in your buildings. We can also look at exterior fixtures, and we'll go through those and see what you own and what is owned by the utility. And we'll work out the peaks there, the can, the utility, and we'll definitely, the ones that are owned by you, the streetlights that are owned by you, will be easy to upgrade. But we'll, we'll do that.
Is there an accounting event right now with streetlights being owned versus?
We don't own any.
Oh, apparently not, all of the streetlights. We just pay them now.
Sure.
Okay. And there have been instances where you can work with utilities, but that's, I guess, complicated, fast-paced, we have to work with you all on that, if you want to go that route. We'll get into that once we get to the detailed audit. If you look on, there's, gosh, these pages are not numbered, that helps, one called leak detection. You can see, this is Lenore City, which is pretty close to my home in Maribor. And we did a project there. And you can see the little red markings there. This is when they turn the system on and they read the leak detection. The red ones show places where there are high probabilities of leaks. The yellow ones are low probability, are lower probability, but still a potential for leak. And it even ranks in order of leaks. This kind of system would be good for the downtown area. It would not work well in the urban areas or in the extremities. So there would be a hybrid system, we would probably look at dentition shift, which is a system where we would, which is portable, you can put it out for a couple of days and listen, and then you pull them up, and they would tell you where the leaks were, or they would help you triangulate the leaks, and then you would move on. James, talk to me about solar, photovoltaic. And also, I would be, my forte is looking at mechanical systems. If you have some old units that may need to be reused, or some other system may be required or may be needed, I'd be glad to look at anything that you point me toward, or if I find something as I survey. Also, we might want to look at some controls from some of your buildings, so that we can set them down at night. I just need to survey those, see what you have, and we would do, I want to see every piece of equipment, every survey on your buildings.
Well, that's not being included in your routine audit when you do that?
Yes. Yeah, exactly. I would go to every building, I would look at the thermostat, I would look at what is controlling, and then.
I just was, I thought I heard you imply that you could do that if we asked you to.
No, I won't do that.
So it will be part of your thing on it?
We'll also have a water team come out and look at your toilets and sinks, and see if there's an opportunity for water contamination in the buildings, in your facilities. Like, I noticed you have some beautiful old china there, for example, that is probably high-consuming china, water consuming. Okay. There's also a page here about security systems. Security systems don't pay for themselves, unless it might help with insurance or something, but that is something that we, Johnson Controls does own, TACO, and that is something that we could look at if you, that would be if you desire us to. You know, you may have an already owned control, but that's something we would be glad to look at. But they're going to definitely save, so, but that would be something, if the project's big enough, it might be able to cover some small ones. Ryan?
James, you want to help me with solar base?
Yeah. So, yeah, just kind of to take off what Robert was talking about. So as far as the solar stuff, potentially what we're looking at is, like Brian said, three of your, three of your large users, initially, like, we know that, you know, these do make sense. There may be some other areas that we, when we do the study, that we might come out and some additional systems also, you know, as we go through it. But primarily, the, what we're looking at is, you know, you've got your river pump station, your main roll water intake that's down on the river. It's a huge energy hog, you know, light power. And so potentially, we're looking to put in a five hundred kilowatt system down there with it to offset, hopefully, you know, well, hopefully it will, offset the, some of the demand usage and also reduce some of the kilowatt hour usage. And then we're looking at the water treatment plant, your water system. There's enough room down there in that area to put in about a two hundred and fifty kilowatt system and hook it up, and, you know, and all of these are set up probably around twenty, twenty-five percent of your usage at the facilities. And then we're looking at the sewer plant.
What does that mean? Twenty-five percent?
Say, say you're using a medium kilowatt hour a year, then we're looking at offset about twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh.
Yeah. So the biggest thing is, you know, because every, and I'll kind of cover that a little bit shortly, is the biggest thing, what you don't want to do.
And when you say system, I just want to make sure we're clear, we're talking about the solar panels.
Yeah, the solar panel, what's, the system is the solar panels, it's the inverters, the whole turnkey project for that site, that facility. You know, so there's panel inverters, all the electrical hookups, you know, the installation, where it's actually, it's interconnected, and it's actually generating and powering a percentage of that facility.
Got you.
Yeah. So it's a.
So you're thinking you can save maybe quarter of the.
Yeah, somewhere, somewhere around twenty or twenty-five percent is what they all said. I'll take initially that we looked at, because, you know, and I don't have the numbers, I shouldn't have looked at them before I stepped up here, but, you know, like I said, the river pump down there is a large user. Those pumps, you know, one pump at least is running twenty-four hours a day. And I don't want to quote a number, but I know it's, you're up, you know, I can't remember where it's at on the, I want to say you're, you're close to, you know, probably twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a month. I think your energy cost down there.
It's five hundred and seventy-five thousand for the water and the sewer per year.
Yeah, water and sewer. Yeah. Yeah, so it's about twenty, it's, you know, probably, it might be closer to forty thousand a month or so, just the pet plant down there. So, so like I said, what I was going to say is, we don't want to take, you know, I don't want to come in here and say you a huge, a big solar that, you know, I can sell it to you cheaper because it's big or whatever, but it don't make sense for you to overpay for it if we're generating, and your facility's not using it, and then it's actually going out into the grid, and you're losing that energy. So that's the reason we try to position it at about twenty or twenty-five percent of your usage, so that way you use a hundred percent of what you're actually paying for through that time. Now, what we can do, you know, after the initial part is, you know, we look at the study or whatever, and say whether there's capacity, you know, in a year or two that you evaluate. Well, if it could have went larger or whatever, then we can look, you know, do it some additional phases or whatever later. But the biggest thing is, we don't want to take an overbuilding system. We want to make sure that you're using everything that you actually, you know, what your cost, because the worst thing you can do is actually overpromise or oversell something and come in here and build you a big system. Yeah, it looks nice, but it ends up costing you money rather than saving you money. And we don't want to do that. So the third system that we're looking at is sewer plant. It's a smaller one, but it's about a hundred and eighteen kW system, I think. And all of these systems would be ground mounted systems. And, you know, as far, a little bit about solar, real quick, is, you know, all the equipment, the panels are warranted for twenty-five years for production, the minimum. Some of them are thirty-year panels that you can get. So what that more or less is, is that the material itself, or the panel itself, is manufacturer warranted for ten years. And then the manufacturer also guarantees a production out of that panel. Say it, they call it a degradation, so they're going to lose, you know, they don't want to put them together to lose about half a percent a year, point five percent. So at the end of twenty-five years, that panel from its original production, what it should be, say, with three hundred watts, in twenty-five years, they guarantee it's going to be producing two hundred and seventy watts out of that three hundred watt panel. It's usually around eighty, eighty-two percent, is depending on the panel manufacturer. So they guarantee that, you know, so there's warranty that comes with that. The inverters.
Excuse me, but so are you saying then that we would own the solar panel?
Yeah. Yes, from some, from the.
So once you, once had it, what we're going to go do with business with Hannah, we would purchase that?
Yeah.
For a term.
That's, that's.
And then we own that solar panel, so whatever that manufacturer's warranty is, is.
Yeah.
I didn't understand that one. I thought, do you own the equipment and?
No, this is, this is.
Is that different than the way Johnson Controls?
So there's a PPA, the Power Purchase Agreement, that sometimes if the city doesn't want to take on a debt, that like, we are handed, we own the system until it's paid off, and then we return that asset over to you. So instead of paying to a utility company or electric company, you would just pay for that asset, and at the end of the term, then you would own that. This is where, since we're bundling this together and the savings is paying for it, from day one, it's your asset. So you start from the beginning. And so the warranty's still regardless, but be covered, but it's just a transfer of ownership is the right way to do it. Some customers, I've had some cities and counties, that they want to, they don't care whether they own it or not as long as the bill goes down. And some say, I want it to be mine, I want to own it, I'll. At the end of the day, it's, it's still saving money and producing its own power.
Yeah, and it kind of add to that, and the distinction, the difference is, and what we're talking about there is a, is a power purchase agreement, you know, and that's what we talked about actually previously back a couple of years ago. You know, and you have no investment. Yeah. Well, you have no investment, the city would have no investment. We'd have an investor that would actually supply all the funds to build it, and then you would pay a fixed rate every month for every kilowatt hour that's generated from those systems. The thing is though, with those, you do, it's a twenty, for the investor to recoup their benefit out.
On an ESCO.
Yeah, so it's a twenty or twenty-five year contract, more or less, that the city would sign, that they would actually buy all that power from those systems. Now, you have no maintenance, and you have no, you know, obligation to that system, and they have to have that key for it. But you don't get the benefits until that year twenty or twenty-five. So bundle it together with all the other projects. The city actually owns the asset from the beginning, and then through the grouping of all the projects together, the, whatever term that is, which is significantly, should be less than that twenty or twenty-five years, then you really reap the benefits from it from that point. You know, say, you know, twelve, fifteen years, whatever it is set up, you know, you have the. And so it's a really, it's more cost savings for you to own the system if that's possible. And that's the reason, you know, grouping the things together, it does make that, make sense to it that way.
And how many panels do we want to need here?
How many panels?
Yeah.
Well, five hundred, five hundred kW would be, let me see, three? Basically, it's, right now, what we're looking at is about nine hundred kilowatt systems, the three systems, it'd be about twenty-seven hundred pounds. You know, just look, somewhere twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred, a little under three thousand.
Can you count that? I'm sorry, Karen.
How much acreage does that take up?
The five hundred kilowatt is about.
Twenty-seven.
Can you read that real quick, what you, twenty-seven hundred?
Twenty-seven hundred pounds, yeah.
Okay.
But nine hundred kilowatts?
Nine hundred kilowatts. Okay. I think basically, it might be around eight fifty, eight seventy. I, I think basically, it might be around eight fifty, eight seventy, uh, because we had to downsize the surer plant a little bit from the original, just because of the space. Uh, and, and as you see on the images, uh, on the one that just, so PBO view, we've got three images. So the surer plant is the one just to the right. Uh, of it, and if you see, I mean, what we're doing with that one is, there's a space between, when you first pull into the surer plant, there's a smog, there's an area to the right of the driveway, the, uh, between the road and the fence anyway. So we're looking at putting the panels into that area, so that's a, that's an area that is not used at all. You know, all it uses motive, uh, so, you know, when we put the system in, whatever, it's going to do a couple of things, you know, uh, then you can actually, we can put a, a weed block, uh, in that or whatever, so it's actually going to increase some maintenance off, off that area there. The center one is your water plant, uh, so, you know, looking at putting the system down toward the reservoir, uh, down there, you know, it fits in there nice. And the orientation, if you notice, uh, all these panels are, we're trying like with the water plant and the, uh, river pump over here, if you want to give them to the south, a hundred and eighty degree essence, uh, is going to give you the best generation of it and produce the most power. So that's what our goal is to, you know, to do that. Um, and then the ones to the left, uh, is the river pump there. Um, and, you know, so, so more or less, the river, river pump's the biggest and then you're probably talking about two or two and a half acres right there. And the rest of them, uh, you know, and, uh, you know, we talked a little bit with the mayor, uh, you know, that's, you know, I know y'all have an, an easement area down there with TBA, uh, to build that one, you know, we have to work with them. With the court, have to work with them to make sure we get the proper easements and stuff set up, uh, and approvals anyway to, to do it down there. But there's a large open space, as you can see there, that they, they do own, that, you know, uh, I feel like they'd probably, uh, work with the city to allow it. Uh, the, the others, there's, you know, y'all got plenty of room, and then my surer plant, I'm putting it into an area where it's not going to affect anything.
And, and you think it's going to take fifteen years to pay for these?
Yeah, I don't really know until we get, get into it, uh, I know when you, when you group it all, and I'll, let's say, run the financial numbers or whatever. Coach, now I'm going to step on the outside of the invention. Uh, you know, so when you group stuff together, different things, how short, shorter or longer paybacks, like, uh, or returns, like Brian was talking about, you know, uh, you know, LED lighting, of course, is, you know, to pay off somewhere between three, four, or five years. You get your return, you break, you get on net, you know, let's say, facility motor or something, it may be, you know, HVAC, stuff like that, maybe thirty to forty years before you actually get a return on that. Solar probably is going to be somewhere around that nine, ten year, uh, on a straight cash flow, maybe eleven, just depending on, you know, how it works out or whatever. So, you know, you, when you group all the, the long, the lengthy items in with the shorter or whatever, that's where you come up with that. So really, I don't think at this point, we know, but I, I think that's what we're shooting for, is the lowest term, you know, lowest year term anyway, that we can possibly get in and make it make sense. So at the end of that, uh, so I think that's truly where you get your financial savings, is you, you're, you're, you know, grouping everything together, you're, you're, you've already have that operating budget, so you're not increasing that as of, you know, this day. You know, so that locks that in. And then you have your savings and everything, uh, that is figured in there year by year. You know, and, yeah, some things may drop off once they're paid for, you know, the lighting, like I said, three to five years or whatever. It may drop off, but during that term, it's helping pay for the rest of it, whatever, those cost savings. Uh, and so, but really, at the end of it though, once you have that financial obligation paid off, even though you haven't spent any more money, then you may drop your, um, financial obligations by fifty percent or forty percent, or it could be sixty percent at that point in time. You know, at that twelve to fifteen years, whatever it comes out to. But it, but what it does too is actually gives you new technology, it gives you updated equipment, uh, and, and a lot of areas that you don't have to have the capital expenditure on the front end, you know, you don't have to go out, you know, you may have some things in surgery, you have some stuff on his budget that, you know, he's looking forward, that's paying him for next year, or, you know, two years down the road or whatever. You can go ahead and add all that stuff in, uh, as you go, and go ahead and get it today, so you actually start getting those savings and improvements of the equipment that you have.
How many years have y'all been in this facility?
Hannah?
Yes.
Hannah's, we've been in this since two thousand eight, so we're, uh, ten years.
The panels, in that pace, that ten years, has these panels held up?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, there's, uh, there's, you know, the, the panels, panels, and, and we use quality equipment. And everything that, uh, whether, we're putting in, whether it's your solar system or whether it's any other equipment that Johnson's, you know, looking out for or whatever. Uh, we, we bring, try to bring the best equipment that, that makes sense for you, and then.
Just to be clear, you do not manufacture the panels?
No, we don't manufacture the panels.
You're, are you an ESCO basically, or what do you?
We, Johnson, Johnson's ESCO.
We are.
Yeah, Johnson's ESCO, we are actually just, Hannah is a developer of energy, renewable energy developer, uh, what they call an, uh, EPC, engineering, pyramid construction.
I think the perception is though, that you're manufacturing and selling, um.
Yeah, no, we, we, yeah, we don't manufacture, we're in, we're in, we're a developer install.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we're agnostic, uh, just like Johnson is, you know, we want to bring the best, the best equipment in, uh, that makes sense for y'all. Uh, you know, the, the best quality too. Uh, so to answer your question, uh, you know, there's panels out there, we, we're not going to use anything that, uh, is at minimum tier one global. And, and tier one more or less global is a, uh, a, a, a scale that's set up for the, the solar equipment anyway, that it, uh, it has to meet the standard, or you can't be classified as that, so it's, it's quality stuff. And, you know, so, I mean, there's US equipment that's, you know, manufacturers in the center, we try to use that as much as we can. We do use, uh, some Canadian, uh, manufactured equipment, and then we do use some Chinese equipment, or, you know, I, I don't say Chinese, Asian equipment. Uh, you know, it really just depends on, you, and, and, you know, there's some cheap foreign equipment, but there's some quality foreign equipment too that's out there.
But, I mean, we're talking to him, uh, this twenty-five to thirty-year warranty would replace it, same with the LEDs, because, you know, in my business, we change everything with LEDs, and it's got a nineteen-year warranty, so it'll fit in there five years and so forth.
Right.
And the savings are there, leaving the savings.
Okay.
What is, what about this, talk to us about this warranty.
Yeah, so, so the warranty, like I said, the panels are warranted on the, uh, on the production warranty from the manufacturer and all that. Once we, what we do actually, as far as Hannah, we do the installation, we actually, we, we take responsibility for that system for one year. Pretty much anything that goes on with it or whatever, a hundred percent, it doesn't matter what it is, it's our, our, our issue. So we will come out and replace electrical equipment, we replace wiring, we replace monitoring equipment, all that stuff, if for one year, we're responsible for it. And we take that obligation seriously. Uh, after that, that first year, we take and, uh, like I said, we make sure that all the warranty information, everything is transferred from the city or to Johnson's or ever has, uh, Johnson probably ever has set up, uh, through the, the financial thing. Uh, the, so, that equipment though, like I said, the manufacturer of the panels is going to warranty for production for twenty-five years. They have a twenty-five year, uh, panel and they have a thirty-year panel, right now is what they're producing. You can buy both of them, the thirty, thirty-year panels are a little bit more expensive than those. And what it is, what I was talking about degradation a while ago, uh, a thirty-year panel that will drop, uh, point three percent a year. A twenty-five-year panel is usually around point five to point seven percent in that degradation. So like I said, a thir- a thir- a three hundred watt panel in twenty years is going to be putting out eighty-two percent of its original, and playing on the twenty-five-year panel. The inverters are warranted for, uh, ten to twelve years, depending on the manufacturer. You can actually buy a, uh, extended warranty for those, uh, for, uh, a nominal fee, it's not very much for the, on the initial install, and get an additional ten years on top of that. So you've got a, a truly a system that is twenty, twenty-two years that it is warranted by the manufacturer. So if anything happens or whatever, they contract, you know, we, we can still work with you, where they, uh, do the work for the manufacturer, we'll come out and take care of the system. Uh, there is, you know, the degradation is a, a factor, is, is really an important thing. You don't really replace the system every twenty years or every twenty-five years or every thirty years. What's going to happen is, in twenty-five years, that system may be only putting out eighty-two percent of originally what it was stated. Uh, so if it was a, a hundred, a hundred kilowatt system, it's putting out eighty-two, uh, kilowatts in twenty-five years. So there comes a point in time, probably thirty, forty years down the road, that you look, at that point, this, whoever's with the city would look at it and say, does it make sense with the cost of the equipment today to take and go ahead and spend some money and upgrade the system? Because then all you can do is replace panels and maybe the inverters. Uh, you know, so that's about, say, fifty percent of the cost of the original, what it would be, and so does it make sense to spend that money, get more production out of it, and, or just leave it alone and let it produce, because it's not costing us anything, it's still saving us, you know, that thirty to forty percent, whatever it is.
It's like your LEDs, you, they won't typically go out, and you won't really see it, but they kind of less and less until they eventually go out.
Yeah, there just gets a point that you need to replace it or whatever, but just because it's guaranteed, there's, there's systems that are out there that are thirty-five to forty-five years old, uh, that are still functioning and producing. You know, they're not producing as much as they were originally, but they're still producing out of it.
I, I need to jump in just to, to talk about things, so when, so we would essentially sub the solar portion into Hannah. And why they're here is because we've done work with Hannah all over the country, all, all the world actually. And as being kind of a preferred contractor for solar, the price, the quality, to me, that, that makes sense. Uh, we typically look at at least three or four subs on everything that we do, from lighting to, I mean, we own our own building controls, but I sometimes still sub that up to keep prices right, make sure that our own company is giving us the right prices. But on the other side of that too, I mean, we own York, uh, mechanical and, uh, HVAC systems, and so, you know, maybe we might want to put a train in, you know, so the, the, the whole point in all of this, the term of the contract, depending on, you know, when we look at how much savings is going to pay for all this we're talking about, we are on the hook for the guarantee. If the solar doesn't generate X amount of power, or if we're saying that we're going to reduce the city's consumption by twenty, twenty-five percent, whatever that number turns out to be, before we even start the project, that is, that is an agreement between Johnson Controls and the city. Um, Hannah, lighting, mechanical, water, bill, whatever, all those other little nuances of the project, uh, they are all under us. So we are responsible for the total project. They mess up, you don't call them, we, we, we will know anyway, because we're on the hook. We mess up, we owe you. If I save you, tell you twenty-five percent savings and we save you, we save you twenty percent, I write you a check for five percent of the difference of what we said. And we have that debate checks, I mean, that's something we don't like to do, but that's, that's in a contract. And so when you look at risk and you look at all this that we're talking about, the really, we assume all that risk, all that liability. We are almost thinking about, say it's a fifteen-year term project, everything that we are talking about will pay for itself, all fifteen years, all in. Fifteen years, we're married, we're together, and if every year, yes, it's.
So in other words, if we do a fifteen-year deal with you.
Yeah.
On year fourteen, if one of those panels, solar panels goes out, we don't care.
That's right, we're responsible.
We call you, and you go fix it.
We fix it.
Right.
And, and, and really, I mean, we assume all that liability, and, uh, and we do, we do, I mean, we, it's never.
Um, I have a question, so if, if the county is going to be paying, I'm sorry. So this, you guys are guaranteeing that the whole cost of this would be the budgeted amount for what they pay in utilities every year?
Well, it won't exceed what, so.
So it won't exceed.
They're going to look at what we actually pay.
Yeah, I don't think that.
So they, so the city will be paying what they save.
Towards the project.
Okay, so their electrical bill on top.
Yeah. Let's, let's, let's say, let's say a million bucks, that, that energy, water, gas adds up to a million bucks for the city. Uh, I say twenty percent I want to save you, that's two hundred K a year I'm going to save you. The term for fifteen years, whatever, two hundred fifteen, that's three million dollars in savings, and that'll be enough to fund, it's a self-funded project that your million-dollar utility budget every year, we just take a little bit of that to pay for the project. So you're still never exceeding what's currently budgeted from now until fifteen years, and so it's truly just a neutral, neutral project. So instead of paying the utility one million dollars, now they're only paying them eight hundred thousand, and two hundred thousand is going for all this new equipment. And so, but it all, it's a net.
For a lot.
Yeah.
Right.
They won't be more efficient, it should, it should maybe, they'll be less, because we're putting in more efficient.
Okay, Ryan.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, is there any questions?
We're moving, I'm sorry, we're moving through this week.
I did code your questions until we get down here.
The last little bit, I was going to just, just the last little bit, so I think we're clear on the ESCO and, and we're responsible. James, the seller's a sub under us, you know, we're liable for everything. The projects don't work unless we find savings to fund the project. Uh, so we are done if we can't find enough savings to make this fit, and we're not there yet because we haven't done it thorough. Well, where we are is, we think there's a project, and we looked at your utility bills, we walked some sides, we've kind of done a high-level look. So we, we, we feel confident, uh, and, you know, before I, I, I keep yapping, uh, we've worked with Jerry quite a bit as far as his needs and concerns. Jerry, do you think thoughts that he might have that, because you're kind of good on the ground?
I think it'd be a win-win situation, I'm responsible for costs, it's my way for money.
Jerry, Jerry is interested, sorry, Kent, I know Jerry is, you know, one of the part, but Jerry is interested is the automated meter reading system. Simply because, um, some things that, well, uh, employees, obviously, if it's automated, uh, meter reader system, we don't have to, that's employees that, uh, we can put on his crew and then as they retire, he wouldn't, he would no longer have them in the budget. So you're going to save some money there in time. Uh, and, uh, they work, uh, rain, sleet, snow, hell, you know, they don't get sick, and we're not planning vacation, comp hours and things of that nature. Uh, and, and, uh, it is a quick indicator, uh, on some water leaks. So if, if we have an automatic water reading system, and the numbers start coming in, for instance, my home or whoever's home, that comes in that generally uses twenty-five thousand gallons of water, it may take our guys three weeks to get around to every meter. But when we put it in the system, boom, it's coming in immediately, and we're going to know, well, John Q taxpayer has got a water leak right here, and, and that could be a contributor to a water loss, why it is fluctuating up and down. We have a large system, they're exactly right, it is a complex system. It is high pressure simply because of the terrain that we have. I mean, when you're going from Burks Town to Penrith County to Jackson County, Hill, down, out, high in the road, I mean, those are, we, we don't live in flat grounds. Uh, we are, we're, we're a rough terrain, and that, that, and that is one of the reasons, and, uh, that our utility bills are so high when it comes to running those pumps. You got to remember, folks, we're running a pump, uh, from the, from Cumberland River, nineteen miles, uh, to our surge tank that gravity flows back to Hillhead. And that part of gravity flows, but we're pushing seven hundred and fifty horsepower of water to, to Hillhead to get to, to unfinished water, to get it to the water treatment plant, it's a lot of money.
You said one key word that occurs in, is terrain, air terrain, these automated things, and, and, which I'm all Burke, I'm a person, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I've read about it, and, and. Is the terrain will actually, I mean, they, they work good in, in, considering all their.
They're terrible without the wrong. What he's talking about, it won't matter, determine about no collar, you have to drive by them to do the reading.
Okay.
Am I right?
Perfect.
Okay, you have to drive by them, it don't matter where it is.
Right.
It don't matter.
We will map your whole city, your system, and as far as inventory, I mean, it will look like a, uh, you Google map something, it, I mean, on one of the slides of the leak detection system, and when it comes to how many meters you have, what size they are, water loss, where it's at, I mean, you can pinpoint right to it. And when it comes to, again, your, this is a revenue generator for the city. Right now, your business is losing money because you are, that money is going through the cracks. We're going to tighten up that cracks, increase the revenue to the city, hopefully, so everybody's happy.
And, and there may be, there may be areas, and I want to, I, I thought it was important, uh, that the council take a look at this, and there may be parts that you like, and there may be parts that you don't like, and you may not like any of it. But I think it is important when we start talking about saving money, that we look at every area that we possibly can, uh, and, and whether it's in the water department, you know, or anywhere else, and, so, uh. whether it's in the water department, junk fire, or warehouse and, so, uh, again, this is just a work session, nobody is voting on anything. But, uh, but, but, but to carry on kind of what you said, you guys have done some work and, and, but still have a little bit more to do to tell us, to give us a full, thorough, uh, best mark on exactly where we're on.
Investment grade audit, yes, sir. And it will be a book, every light fixture will be counted, measured, uh, it, it, it is some great reading material, if you're really tired and you, you want to lose some eyesight. It is a, these engineers, well, we, we unleash team and, uh, it is, uh, it is exciting. You will see everything accounted for and every fixture will.
And that'll be a prize, right?
Yeah.
That'll be a prize.
Well, we did that just yesterday, so, him, I apologize.
This projected size says four point seven million and I know that's just a potential projected size, but of that, these twenty-eight hundred panels and these solar systems and so forth, if they're a big chunk of that cost, is that something that is going to be an insurance premium increase that we have to additionally insure these things since we own them from day one and are there?
Well, well, there, I mean, obviously if we own them, sure, we're going to add it to our insurance.
Absolutely. But it's either, I mean, do we need to?
We'll have it closed too, it'll be all, part of the, the bill will be a turnkey, it'll all be, uh, marked, secured with the gate and everything.
If, if you don't mind, we can just, uh, say something about that.
Good question.
It's close, at Ducktown, uh, we, we actually own three systems already ourselves. Uh, we've got, uh, twenty-seven, a fifty and a, a ten. So, and I know y'all are under T M L probably on your insurance.
That's right.
Uh, so we're the same thing there, uh, it was not a, any, I mean, of course you got a check with, with the pool, but we did not have any increase in our, our cost, uh, as far as the salary, it's just part of it, it's added to your infrastructure, but, but that's a good question.
Yeah, it is.
The, uh, part on this, uh, this slide here, the four point seven million, we kind of, that's a, a number we're not completely.
Right, any of us.
But roughly kind of what we looked at, the way that we looked at it, we've got four point seven million dollars of self-funded projects. And that includes all this that we're talking about, and that scope could change once we dig in and we have some more workshops and people we're talking about. Here's some things, here's, you know, we can, we have a tool that you can literally select and deselect items based on term and that will fluctuate the project size. This is y'all's, y'all's project.
You put it together, the four point seven would be on the outside.
Yeah.
The maximum, almost the maximum project.
So I, I think we, we've heard a lot tonight, uh, and obviously we're not making any decisions tonight, but just some discussion with the council, uh, on, uh, uh, do we want them to, uh, further look into our system and see if there is a cost savings and if so, financially, what will be our responsibilities to Johnson, to Dros? Uh, what would you like to do or do nothing or taken under advisement or what do you want to do?
How much is our water loss now?
We're right at, Jerry, about forty-six. It's, you, you, to get a, to, to get a, get a, to get a true loss, you have to go twelve months at a time.
Exactly.
And, and I think we fell into thirty-nine percent, forty percent at one time, at one time.
We were at forty percent.
Are we round that down?
You, to get an accurate count, this month it may be twenty-five, next month it may be forty-two.
Yeah, but if you annualize it for the last twelve months, we're around thirty-nine percent.
Thirty-nine, yeah, thirty-nine, thirty-eight percent.
So nearly forty percent of our water is leaking.
True to water.
That's right.
And true to.
Okay.
That's right, that's why this project is.
And, and to the state, but, well, for, but then I think you'll find this out when you get to the, uh, the, uh, municipal utility board meetings like Ron was.
Yeah.
I think the state allows you before, uh, that every system has got twelve, twenty percent leakage.
Just.
Yeah, just a period. So, so there, there, there's no system that's going to be zero, just a period. Okay, no, 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 hey Kelly, and I'm not saying that thirty-nine to forty percent is acceptable, but what I'm saying is, there's no system that's going to say, you're zero percent, that don't work.
And I'd like to make a couple of comments here.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, most systems we work with are twenty, thirty percent.
Right.
Uh, but they don't have here the challenges.
That's right. That's true.
And so the fact that you're at thirty-nine is almost a, and the two hundred PSI pressure.
True.
It's, it, I, I would almost expect that considering, uh, you know, that, that needs to be modernized and some things that we can. Yeah, so, that's, but it is high, and that, that always shocks me every time I look at these numbers. Yeah. In our own back door, you said the Public County Schools has just signed up with you. From presentation to signing the contract, about how long did that process start or? Four months, about four months?
Yeah, now, they're under a reason, the states and state money, uh, for that project and, and, uh, we would have probably been done with the project, but because it's, uh, we're in line to get the state money, they, they, they are, we are very, very, we've already got the approval, T P A is already inspected on the side. We should get it, those proceed, I think this week, uh, and then we'll mobilize ourselves to get to work on the school system. But we are, uh, yeah, I mean, it's good money from the state, it just takes, it takes a lot, a little while.
Is there even other municipalities locally within a fifty mile, seventy-five mile range besides the four bit chasing that's upcoming board weekends?
I was just curious. So, you know, it's interesting with, with, uh, cities and, uh, counties, the size, complexities of owning utilities or not, uh, making these projects work, sometimes, uh, the water meters are, uh, are in, in rough shape sometimes, but they're replacing them themselves.
Every utility company is not the same.
It's all different.
It doesn't matter, you've got four thousand customers.
Right, we're the bad guys taking money away from the utility, and so.
Well, and, and the terrain's different, I mean, just like the guys have found out, our terrain is just.
Rob, we've done Camden, uh, I think it's the city of Camden, we've done a little more city. Uh, lovely here in Tennessee, uh, city of, always good to, Kings.
Kingsport, Kingston.
Kingsport, not Kingston, Fort, yeah, Kingsport, I mean, Johnson City, near, near Johnson City, um. I think, uh.
Not Ducktown?
Not Ducktown?
No, they did.
Then it's solar, then it's out of town.
Yes, we, we self-funded ourselves, but we're, we're kind of small.
Now, as far as performance contracting, uh, outside of, I'm not thinking water projects there, uh, we've done, uh, O R N L, Y twelve. We've done, uh, Albert Campore Campbell, uh, I've been doing this for nineteen years.
That's fine, I was just curious.
I think it's a good question.
The, uh, the, I, I was going to just, there's this last page here, it talks a little bit about Johnson Controls and I don't want to, it's not really about us, but we've, we've done a lot of projects, been a lot of success and uh, I think that, uh, it's something to, to, as far as having that easy button, you know, we've, uh, eight offices here in Tennessee, I've got engineers all over the place, I mean, it's a, uh, it's, it's a pretty good setup when it comes to, because everybody can stand before you and tell you the best pour honey in your ear, and you know, when it comes to execution and, 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 and really doing what we say we're going to do, I think we've done so much work in Tennessee because we, we back it up. Uh, we're not closing shopping time soon, if the term is fifteen years, we're going to be here. Um, Carter County Schools, I think we've finished a fifteen-year term with them and we're looking at them another phase. You know, think of it as, as, as new technologies come around, right, when these slides were put in, it's T twelve, LED wasn't around. You know, it went from T twelve to T eight, to T five to LED, there might be a one watt LED around the corner. We're responsi-, I mean, when we're married, when we're together for that term, right, it's our obligation because, hey, did you know, this is coming out, this is coming out. And that's some of the advantages of working like a big company like ours, because for one, we own a lot of the companies that we make our own stuff and we actually do the work ourselves. A lot of smart engineers that are doing the work, but I think at the end of the day, it's, it's, we take on the risk. I, I would say, and I, and I want to close here because I want to really get to some questions. Uh, really the next steps on this, on this page here, it talks about, we're kind of where we are in this prelim, you know, there were a lot of steps and a lot of things that probably aren't listed. But, uh, the next piece for us is, is if, if the, the, the board decides, the city council decides that they want to move forward with us to kind of develop this project, um, we have a project development agreement that we would like for you to look at and review it and potentially vote on on your next meeting for us to kind of really do that deep dive, investment grade audit and then come back. So that's something that, um, I could.
Yeah, feel we mail it to the office.
Yeah, I email to you, look at it and if we need to come back and present or talk whatever, uh, but that's kind of where we are right now. We feel that there's, there's definitely a project here, we can, we can do a lot of good, uh, it's just on y'all to kind of think about, it's something that you want to, want to look at. Uh, I mean, we're, we're going to be working right here in the county fixing schools anyway, it makes sense, uh, you know, fixes it too, so, but it's, uh, we already have the mechanical people already on deck and ready to go, so whatever you do to, to help out.
Can you get a card?
Yeah. Well, I definitely think we need to move to the next step.
Absolutely.
Nothing, nothing, nothing more.
That's right.
Thank you, sir. Yes, please, look at the next step.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan.
Hey, Ryan, sir, you're welcome, man.
Big list, thank you.
Big list, Ryan.
I think you're, I got, I got, I got some more in my bag here, just in my wallet.
And if there's, is there anything, I mean, you know, we, we, we sometimes talk kind of with, go through this and, and I, I will, I will say that we can, we can bug you to death. Uh, have as many workshops as you need, be as transparent as you can.
Sure.
Uh, I know for the school system, uh, we had to come out several times and I had to set up a number of workshops just so everybody understood. Um, Kelly, something you got it, so you, you, you.
No, I don't.
It's all you got?
No, 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 I have a lot of questions.
But, uh, a lot of stuff we still don't know until we really dig in and really account for every single item.
But, uh, my main priority is, I, I mean, I'm just one here, but I would like to see our city save money.
Who wouldn't? I mean, a taxpayer dollar, if you use it wisely, right, I mean, that's.
With them.
And, and the, I, I, on the business side, whoever wants to give away part of your business, you know, your business is running through the cracks, you're putting on the money, treated water.
And, and I just now said, told Kelly, which I don't care who knows it, I'm saving money too, but I told him, it's not going to be over that thing. That, that's the key, is, you know, we're going to look at several years down the road, but it is, it's going to be an advantage.
Right, you'll notice too, for, so what we're finding, a, a lot of cities, uh, I'm working with a city right now in West Tennessee, in Myland, and, uh, you know, mayor's going to try to bring in new businesses and a lot of them are asking about infrastructure, is your water treatment plant big enough about, I want to bring a business in here? Is your facility set up to do this, you know, all these kind of items set up? You know, when you start thinking, when people come in, they start looking, if I want to open up shop here, which I wish that the city owned a street lights, because that is an instant, like, wow, this city has LED street lights. It, it, it looks beautiful and, uh, I hate it, uh, because there's a lot of smart technology that you can integrate and, and really have to do some neat stuff with street lights and houses and assets, but, um, we're here, we're here for you, I mean.
Now get out of here.
I'm going to put the app right.
Any questions, I'll be, if, if you, uh, get us a look at that, uh, contract.
It's just a project development agreement, it's just a standard?
Yeah, absolutely, so if you get that to us, I'll get it out to the board if they want to discuss it more and if we might want to have you back if there's more questions, uh, and, and things of that nature and we'll go from there, how's that?
Uh, that, that works out perfectly, you know, these projects, they take a lot of time.
So I, yeah, and I'd like each council to think about it in two or three weeks if, you know, if you slip on it and all that good things, you may have questions that arise and let's come back together and, uh, have another meeting with you, okay? So thank, thank you guys for coming in, we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely, have a, have a safe trip back to, how long does it get, take to get to Ducktown?
It's three hours.
Okay.
It's two hours to Merle.
It's not Maryville, it's Merle.
Where is Ducktown?
Where's, oh, we're in the, in the, in the river.
Oh, sure, sure.
Next county, say.
No. We're on the beginning of the next four.
And, and I think he's the lucky one, he's Wilson County man, right?
He know. I'm closer to y'all, so I, so yeah, I'm trying.
All right.
So we've got you surrounded with this.
All right, good deal, guys, thank you for coming up and we'll get you off, okay?
Hey, Ryan, are you doing some of the work on that?
Hey, Robert, go out there.
Yeah, yeah, we got selected to do all that.
Just know what you know, that light system that hurts.
Well, so I used to work for Steen there when we did the jail prison, uh, they got there as a, in, as.
So let's, uh, we've, yeah. Let's, let's take a little three-minute break here and, uh, yeah, and then we, we will return and looks like, uh, Mr. Mitchell, you're rest in back.